Good afternoon. Our work session is called to order. We will follow the agenda as stated, beginning with item 2.01, master milestones, planning several items beneath that section. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Item 2.01, of course, master milestone planning will consist of an update on extended learning time followed by early start waiver application update pre-K4 and we'll conclude with the, an update on workload. Ms. Campson?
Good afternoon. Dr. Houston, members of the school board, Dr. King. I am excited to go over the extended learning time. We got a little preview of it at our last meeting. Dr. Stewart asked me to give you a little bit of information then, but today we're going to kind of go over the entire, all the information we have. As everyone knows, we've been challenged to continually increase the amount of learning time we provide for our students in Norfolk Public Schools. We do this because we have Dr. Stewart, but we also do it. But we have another reason that's just as important, and that reason is that because all of the research tells us that the best way, the best thing that we can do for our children is to increase their learning time, and especially children that come from high poverty homes and they need a lot of extra support. And so we, so what we wanted to do, and the board's been asking us, is what is it that you're actually doing in the schools? What are we doing in the schools to increase the learning time? So, what I did was, kind of give you a little overview of the types of ways that we can extend that learning time, and that'll be the next slide. Oh, I can do, I have control? Okay. And I, you're limiting me in my control? And I'm pointing it to which instrument? Anywhere?
It's anywhere I want. Is it on? Just click it.
Oh, thank you. I need a little extended learning time to practice on the clicker. Okay, so the different ways that we could, the different ways that we can extend our learning time are the ones that are pretty obvious, which are offer before-school programs, offer after-school programs, and those are the most typical. We can also hold Saturday school, which so many of our schools also do. We always do summer school. And then the one that's, that is, really gives us the And that means we look at the different times we have in the day. It might be a little time, sometimes it's one of their special blocks. It might be extending a 60-minute block to a 75-minute block. Different ways that you can adjust your master schedule to give extra time to children who need it. Another way we can do it is we simply go in and we pull children out. Now, we have to do this carefully because we never pull them out of our Tier One Core Instruction, because that would defeat the purpose. We would be intervening, but then we would get them behind in something else. So we have to watch, but there are always times in the school day where the teacher has finished the direct instruction and the students are doing practice. They're doing a lot of guided practice and independent practice, whether it's math period or whatever, and so during that time, we can also go in and pull out a little group of them, and rather than have them doing some independent practice, they can be doing practice with a teacher guiding them through it step by step. Nothing has a bigger impact than putting a highly qualified teacher in front of a group of children, rather than having them do something independent. Or we can push it into the classroom. Now, in the elementary schools, we do this every single day in reading, because during reading time, the children have three 30-minute blocks that they rotate through the teacher, and then they do reinforcement work, and then they do some independent work, some computer work. You can push into the classroom and do some children during that time. And then, of course, we can look at our schedule and simply figure out how to reschedule it to capture time, and there's actually a very good place we can go. And some of, and this is already being used in all of our school improvement cluster schools and in many of our other schools where the principals are actually plugging in information into this site, and it actually helps them create a block of time, figure out how to organize their minutes, so that in schools like Norview Elementary, for example, they've created a block of time at the end of the day where everyone is getting either extension or intervention. So those are the different ways that we can do it. Then I surveyed the schools to see how many schools were doing each of these different activities. Very few schools would be doing every single one, but they were, all of them are doing multiple, multiple ones. And we have some examples, if you would like to hear an example. I think I gave a couple at the last meeting. I know we're on a timeline, but if anyone's interested, we could give you some examples. The executive directors would be happy to do that. And then, how do we fund these? We have our Title I funds that we're all familiar with. Now, the second one, I actually thought the SOL remediation money was state money, but apparently that has now revolved, as Dr. Thornton pointed out to me, and has become local money. So, Dr. Stewart, I have even more money in the budget than I told you last time, because the $1 million that we use for the SOL remediation money is also local in addition to the, a little over $500,000. So about $1.5 million is in our current budget this year. And then, of course, we have a lot of grants. We have a lot of our great partners that work with us. That's pretty much an overview of what's happening with extended learning time in Norfolk Public Schools.
Dr. King? Thank you, sir. Ms. Campson, thank you. I know when you first arrived, you analyzed the situation, and one of the first things that you indicated was, we needed more time, more parental involvement, more of many things, but more time. One way we have yet been unable to get that is by having the state relinquish its power of choosing hotels and travel over students, and that is allowing localities the option to start the school before the year. Thank you for the pilot project, for looking at one wonderful elementary school, to give them the opportunity to experiment that and then expand it further, but thank you for this special presentation and for giving me what I needed to vote in favor of this budget.
Just for clarity, so we list before-school, after-school, those are optional, is that correct? So it's not necessarily the case that all students at each school is actually receiving additional time, is that correct?
All students, the different, the before-school, the after-school, the Saturday school, and the summer school, different student groups, and sometimes all groups are invited, but they're not required to attend those. The during the school day, those are not optional for children, because children are scheduled into those blocks of intervention. So any child that's a Tier Two or Tier Three would get an extended time, because they would all be somewhere during the school day, but we hope to get them into more of the others.
Right, so, I guess, as we've talked about it, you know, we've, as I've understood it, we've tried to say, how can we get more time for all students, but also more time for specific cohorts of students? So can you just, if you have, I mean, can you break it down even more to say whether or not the students that we are targeting are actually where we need them to be, or is it still something that we need to consider moving forward in terms of policy and initiatives to make sure that we get to the place that where we, well, at least where we've talked about we really want to be? Does that, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, and I can see that that would be a concern, because in addition to the during the day, and the reason schools are really moving to a lot of during-the-day programs and really working with those schedules to try and get them is because of the concerns of not always being able to get their hands on the students that they want. It's always a challenge, and that's why a lot of these programs have a lot of incentives to get students to come in, because you can't require them to be there before or after school. You run into a season of sports and you'll see them disappearing from, from the program. The schools are going out, they're getting, calling parents, doing a lot of different things to try and get them in, but in the end, as you said, you can't be sure you're going to get your hands on every single student that you want to. And that's something that, you know, we could look into as we start exploring this more exactly. What I have is, what each of the schools gave me, is they actually gave me a description of their particular programs, and, and the executive directors are very familiar with the programs in their school and could certainly share some with you. I think at the last meeting, I shared a couple. But it is a challenge. It's always been a challenge for us, but you'd be surprised at how well-attended a lot of these programs are, but I can't guarantee you that every single child that I want to get my hands on is at that program. And what usually happens in the schoolhouse is, the principals and their teachers are aware of which students they're being challenged to get in, and so they're making extra special sure that they're getting as many doses during the school day as possible. And this is where you'll hear the terms double dose, which would be that extra extended time that we do, and then you will hear triple dose, because, and when you hear triple dose, that's happening for two classes of students, the really, really seriously behind Tier Three students, and the ones they can't get their hands on outside of school hours. So it's a really big effort to do this, and this is a huge drive, because we all agree with Dr. Stewart, and the research is very clear that this is something that we need to do. Oh, he was ready to jump in?
It is actually a work in progress. And when you, when you take a look at whole notion and the paradigm shift and thinking around the, during the school day, that's a paradigm shift in terms of flexible master scheduling and, like you heard Ms. Campson mention. However, what schools are working to do and evolving around is to, is to create those caseloads that we heard, whether it's a Tier Three, Tier Two, Tier One, so that each, we are, we are targeting each student based on where they're performing. Before-school is an example, so they're using the caseloads, beginning to use the caseloads to check off the students that need to attend as to whether they're addressing the need before-school, after-school, Saturday school, or during school. Now, we talk a lot about during school, because then we have what we call the captive audience, because we're not guaranteed that we're going to get 100% before-school and after-school. And then we also see examples of schools utilizing safety net money, for example, providing transportation. So all of those things, so beginning to reach out to do that. And so that's why I call it a work in progress, because there are plenty of examples of where schools would say to you, pretty quickly, that if you ask them, are they getting 100% of their students in their safety nets in the way that they would want to for the amount of time they want to see them in those safety nets? No, not at this point. So that's why we call it a work in progress. Are they now targeting, targeting those students in a more laser-like manner? Yes, so that's, so this is an example of focusing on it and pinpointing where those students are, to the point now where principals are able to articulate to you how many students are in Tier Three, Tier Two, Tier One, and what the elements of the domains are around the problems and how they're linking it to the safety nets. But it's still an evolving piece where we need to really hone in on and then do, do more and continue that, so.
Because I was just thinking from a board perspective, if there's some goal or recommendation that comes forward, that say we want to see this much more time, then we would establish that, and then the administration would go out and figure out how to do that, and then what we would receive is just some progress reports of how we are meeting or moving towards that, moving towards that goal. So, you know, I don't know if it's something that we do later on, but it just seems to me if we're going to save more time, we can try to figure out what we're really trying to get to and then just chart our progress towards, towards getting there.
I think whenever we talk about time, we always have to consider both quantity and quality. And so
Looks at that and provides that leadership for the administration. I think it's important that we are well-informed by the experts in terms of what, what that looks like, because we might be asking for, you know, just to throw out a number, six more hours a month, but, so that's quantity, but what does that look like in terms of actual activity and quality of time? And that's the feedback we would, you know, really need from those who are responsible for the actual execution of it. Warren?
This very slide is, I think, wonderful to build on this year, next year, and years out. This, this very analysis, I hope that we can add after-school programs, add summer school programs, and add all of these initiatives in Norfolk. I, I think it's critical that we grow that regularly. And I hope that we will look at the opportunity perhaps to add minutes to the school day without violating our agreement with our teachers. They wonder, they already give us an inordinate amount of time, and they're wonderful at doing so. And again, to continue to look at beginning school before Labor Day for more schools, if not all schools in the city of Norfolk. The reason why I ask, and I hope that all of these will be in the future of Norfolk, is that, not because we don't do a good job with the time that we have, because our teachers do and our principals lead them well, but in my opinion, we've known all this long, and Dr. King knew when he came here that we needed more time, and I'd like to increasingly expand the opportunity for more time, but I'm so grateful for this presentation and this reassurance. Thank you. Okay? Continue on.
Next item on the agenda, sent us on early start waiver update, and so we would like to provide that for you.
What we're going to do today is take you quickly, let me take you to the next slide, to the timeline that we've been following since we, since the board initially approved the pre-Labor Day opening start waiver. And you can see, get that working, on February 4th, the board approved the application, and that application was sent to the state on February 16th. The committee or the, the department that reviews the pre-Labor Day request, opening request, contacted the school district and asked for a conference call to discuss our waiver with some suggestions and concerns that they had. And that conference call was, was held on, held on March 20th, and in attendance were the superintendent, the chief of staff, myself, the executive director for J Cox, and the principal of J Cox Elementary School. And we had quite a long and, and very helpful conference call with them. They, I think there were three or four members of their department there, and they took us through concerns that they had with the waiver, very difficult to, to get a waiver that doesn't have to do with weather or the surrounding districts being on this, being on the altered schedule. And so with that information, that was on Friday, March 20th, they gave us one week to revise the waiver request with their suggestions and corrections, and there were some particulars they were concerned with. So, at that time, the school principal went back and had discussions on the following Monday with his staff and with members, his parent community members, and then a new team came to the school consisting of members of my staff from academic affairs, members of Dr. Williford's staff from Osti, including himself, and members of Mr. Cumberbatch Smith's staff, all together sitting down, and we spent a day discussing, and you can see what we focused on. And the first thing we focused on is what we always focus on and what our superintendent continually reminds us to focus on, which is what's best for children. Then we looked at parent and staff support, and there were some concerns there that the principal shared with us. And then we looked at, our goal was to extend learning time and opportunities for our students, and we, and then, of course, including all the revisions that we've been directed or suggested to do by the State Department. Based on all of that, we redid the, the waiver request, and then we requested, rather than waiting to just send it in on Friday and get it kicked back again, we asked if we could have another conference call prior to Friday, and that conference call was set up the day before that, the following Friday, and we, and we met with the State Department on March 26th, which was the day before the revised waiver was due back to them. And the conference call, the, the Department of Education was extremely pleased with all the corrections and revisions that we made, especially our focus on the increased learning time, because the revision actually added three weeks in August that led from August 10th leading right up into the beginning of pre-service week. But as we discussed what we had put into the waiver, they started talking among themselves, and then they came back and said, well, the way this has been revised, and of course you have a copy of that in your board docs, we don't feel that you need the waiver, you can move ahead with your plan as you've scheduled it, which basically, if you look on (pause) take us to it, take you real quick, there, to the, the calendar that you have on yours, you'll see that this plan actually puts the children at J Cox with the opportunity to be in school per, almost, almost year-round, because it has our three-week intercession, and intercessions are the big thing that all the research talks about, in August with additional ones in the fall and the winter, and our regular summer school program, the children are actually in school pretty much all year-round, with optional in the summertime and required for all the rest. So, and the key points, going backwards there. Okay, and this is what it looks like. We called it August Ready, because we're elementary and we like cute names. And it has three intercessions, and that's what the research is saying with the intercessions and how powerful they are, and we have the summer intercession that is scheduled to start this fall, this summer, August 10th, 2015, which is three weeks, and we're doing this with our partner, United for Children, helping us fund this program, in combination with Title I funding, and the students would, would come in for academic review and catch-up and intervention and extension, optional, during these three weeks, along with a lot of enrichment activities that are being provided by our great partner, United for Children. Then, at the end of the first quarter, using the Oc, the September and October student assessment data from our new assessment program, they would have a special creative scheduling of their master schedule that would include a focus on the items and the areas that they were, they were struggling with, or the opportunity to increase what they're doing, and then the same would happen with the winter ones. So that you see, the key components of the new plan would give us increased number of instructional days prior to state accountability testing. We would have three weeks, four days a week, which would be 12 days, expanded learning time and opportunities, the creative scheduling to provide intensive support during the fall and winter sessions. Mr. Cumberbatch Smith has already been, been doing some modeling of this, the actual day that we were there that Tuesday, he was focusing on math, and he had creatively scheduled all kinds of exciting math activities that went on all day. And then, we would have a targeted safety net differentiated instructional support in reading and math. And then, another big component of August Ready in this particular program is that during the three-week intercession and the two one-week intercessions, we would have a heavy parent and community involvement with workshops for parents and bringing in our community people and seeing what other support we could offer our families. And that's pretty much what the program looks like and where we are with this at the moment. Yes, oh, I guess, I don't call on you. Sorry!
So, are the, the three weeks prior to the September typical start date, are those optional or required?
They are optional.
They're optional. And when they did the United for Children program, actually, that's at PB Young and Teywater Park, so has United for Children done anything at J Cox already?
In answer to your question that you, that you sent in, yes, there now, I mean, you said that you're wishing they would expand to, to another school, and J Cox was already slated for their expansion. So they'll be working with J Cox during the regular summer school in July, and now they're also partnering with us for the August Ready program.
And for the children in August, they will be provided bus transportation?
Yes.
Okay.
That's one of the supports that we're receiving from, in fact, I just talked to Sarah Bishop before I came in here to confirm that piece.
And our goal is to get 100% of them?
As many as we can, and, and, and you can bet that the principals are already working on it.
Sure. Thank you.
You said, you know, 100% of the school population, 100% of the targeted group, is that what I?
Um, yeah, I mean, that would make even more sense, 100% of the students who are needing to have the extra assistance to be there, but I'm sure that
Right, it needs to be very clear that this, this does not represent 100% of the student population of the school.
Why don't we have Mr. Cumberbatch Smith, please?
You can, you, sure, you can come on.
The question that I had, Mr. Cumberbatch, and thank you for being here today, this is very exciting for your school, is to have, will all of the students in your school be able to participate in the three-week?
The invitation will be provided to all students. And in reference to the 100%, we're talking about 100% of the targeted students, primarily our Tier Two and Tier Three students.
Have we started to communicate this with the families of children and teachers, and they prepare for their summer?
Actually, we, we started the discussion with the, with the teachers when we talked, when we started talking about the initial waiver. And we did the, when we did the revision and got okay from the board last week, I was actually waiting for further clarification or presentation to this board, which I'm meeting with my staff on Friday afternoon to provide a little bit more clarification, but I already have a team constructed at the school, working on how we're going to roll it out, what, what will the assessment, benchmark assessments be, and how we're going to recruit parents and students to participate.
I do have one more question in general, but thank you for being our pilot school. I think this is a great opportunity for you, and thanks for your leadership on this. So, Dr. King and Ms. Campson, given the response of the Department of Education to this waiver, what does that mean for our interest in having this division wide in the year to come?
Well, I think this gives us a good opportunity, gives the team a good opportunity to take a look at the success, and I think it's very smart to have, to begin with a pilot such as this, and pull from the tenets of success of this particular pilot and build from there and expand. Because based on this model, this model was, was carefully developed at the school level, and I think that the, the key piece here is that we have staff buy-in and principal leadership that has secured community buy-in. Both of those things are extremely important. The challenge, as we were doing this and building it, really centered on a number of things. Of course, budget always presents itself in terms of, if you're going to extend the year and provide additional teaching days, then there are implications for the contracts, implications for money, increasing the, you know, the stipends, all of those things, as well as a number of other items that come into play, like food service and the number of days that you provide there. So, this gives us an opportunity to study this model, and this process is one that, as you see it, it, it has to be good for children, because it's, it's focused on the school's analysis of where children are, where they're strong, where they're deficient, and it provides enrichment as well as the safety net approach. So to answer your question, I think a, a close study of this with formative frequent reports on how it's progressing early would help determine how many additional schools would come along and build readiness, because readiness is important before you, before we move forward with expanding it from a wide standpoint. And this gives us that opportunity to look at budget implications as well.
And did the Department of Education comment at all about, they knew that we were likely to apply for this, but they, did they encourage us to take a step back and look at the success of this program? Did they say, sure, apply for next year? Did they have any comment?
Success of this program, as well as the readiness piece, because one major focus of the first conference call was around readiness to begin before Labor Day, and readiness for them meant buy-in for, buy-in for, from teaching staff, buy-in from the community, ensuring that it's not simply additional time, because it's not time that's innovated, it's what you do with the time that's innovated, and that's what this represents. So that was the gist of that discussion.
I think, and I'm not sure if you made the point, but again, for clarity, to have the board understand that one of the reasons why I didn't have to move forward with the waiver
And readiness for them meant buy-in for, buy-in from teaching staff, buy-in from the community, ensuring that it's not simply additional time, because it's not time that's innovated, it's what you do with the time that's innovated. And that's what this represents. So that was the gist of that discussion.
I think, and I'm not sure if you made the point, but again, for clarity, to have the board understand that one of the reasons why we didn't have to move forward with the waiver is because it's not mandatory for the entire school. And I think it's also good for us to hear a little bit about some of the concerns with parents, with children in other schools as it related to the scheduling, some of those challenges that we knew would, you know, would surface as we talked about this. So could you say a little bit about some of those concerns that you ran into?
I think the principal could talk to you about that.
One of them was we had students who, parents who had students in multiple locations. And if we were going to start a week early and end a week early, there were issues with implications with childcare. And then the intercessions also played a factor in, with childcare. Even for my staff, I started looking at ways that I could accommodate for childcare while they, because they had to come back a week, two weeks prior to everyone else. So, that by itself, with this revision, however, that didn't play a factor, those things didn't play a factor. So, this one turned out to be not just better for children, but for morale and the culture of community itself, it turned out to be a better model.
Right. And then one final thing, you were making the point about the expedited retakes that are now being allowed, and how that also impacted the decision-making.
We are still excited. Expedited retakes. We've been trying to get them for elementary schools for years. Most states are doing those. And this gives our children an opportunity, if they are within 25 points of passing the SOL test, of having an opportunity to retake. We've been able to do it at the high school levels for 10 years for the credit-bearing classes. So what happens is, we take the, we have two weeks plus because you have makeups of giving the test, and then there's two weeks, full weeks of school left, so we get to have a week to provide interventions because we get, you know, we're taking these tests on the computer, we get the results back quickly. We're able to have a week to give even more intense interventions to the students that are in that 375 to 399 range, and then they're allowed to retake the test. And if they are successful, the first test, the failing test goes away and the new one allows them to now be successful with a pass. And this was a little concerning for the schools that are stopping two weeks early. Because then, well, what do we do? Do we then get permission to test them earlier so they have time? But that doesn't, that defeats the point. And so it's something that probably might be able to be worked out. It's just this fast it would have been a challenge for us to work out. It's something that we now need to go back and look at how to make that work. And I'm sure other districts are also experimenting with that too, and an answer will come, but it won't be an answer that we have to come up with immediately.
Okay. Forgive me, I just try to, I'm not sure I understand the model. So the, I understand the three-week volunteer session from August 10th to the 27th. And then the fall intercession between, for the first one, November 2nd through the 6th, can you explain that to me again, how that works?
The intercessions, the fall one?
The fall, right.
I'm going to let the principal do that again because he has designed it.
What this would allow us to do is, it would use, we'd use the snapshots from the district assessment, district and internal assessments, to see exactly where we are in terms of student performance. Then those areas that we are having, we continue to have issues around, then we'll pretty much flip the schedule upside down to provide intensive support and enrichment for our students during that time, which would still allow us to stay on pacing with the district and be able to meet the timelines of the other assessments coming up. But it would allow us, school-wide, to address those areas that we're having concerns with on the benchmarks.
I think you were doing one...
Within that first, that first nine, those first nine weeks.
Maybe if you could share just for a moment, a little bit about the math one that you were doing as a one-day model.
Oh, for our, we did a three-year snapshot of student performance on the state assessment. We realized that measurement was an area of huge concern at J Cox on the SOLs. At the same time, on the state blueprint, it accounted for a large percentage of the items on the assessment. So what we did was, after we did a number of assessments and we saw it, saw that it continued to be a problem, we took one day and we arranged hands-on activities for each grade level. So we had third grade one day, fourth grade one day, and fifth grade one day. And they spent the entire day with the assistance of the math department. We planned activities for students to be engaged in that, just math the entire day on that one specific strand, so that they can get additional support outside of just what the classroom teacher can, could provide.
So November 2nd to the 6th, November 3rd is a teacher workday, correct?
Yes.
But November, the other days of that week, is school in?
Yes.
Okay. So, school, regular school is in during that week, except for, I guess, students are off the 3rd.
But we have some, we have some additional time with, the district already has what they considered safety net time built in the pacing. So in addition to that safety net time in the pacing, we'll still be able to accomplish the work that's, that we are setting forth for the intercession time.
So the, you still have the required 180 days that students are attending?
Yes.
In the summer, you have the option of students attending the summer session?
Yes.
And then during the intercession, is this...
Everyone will be in school.
Everyone will still be in school?
Yes.
And is there additional before or after school that takes place? I guess I'm not quite understanding.
No, no, we'll be following, we'll be following the regular 180-day schedule. However, for those weeks when the intercessions are in play, the schedule in the school will look, the master schedule will look different to allow us to focus specifically on those targeted areas.
Okay.
I guess all children can bet that. It's your topic about this, because I was going to ask about extended, oh, sorry, expedited testing.
I'll follow you.
Okay. So, your comment about expedited testing, that's about the recent change, right?
Correct.
Okay. Are we prepared as a division to do expedited testing this year?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be doing that at all grade levels as appropriate, as allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to make that clear, that we're doing it this year, we're prepared to do it.
We are prepared to do it. And that was just last week that the state board approved it.
Exactly.
But already, the executive directors, Dr. Bailey and I and some other people have discussed it, and we're planning to expand that discussion. We need to get input from principals on exactly how to schedule it and to get them started on their plan, because it's very important for them to have a plan in place for the intervention week.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So, just to add to that response, prepared means in the process of building that plan.
Right.
Because the state, as you heard, just passed officially the notion that we can do 3A expedited retakes. So, there will be some guidance from the state in terms of what that means and what some of the parameters could be, that kind of thing. And so the plan has to be built around how we move forward with it. And so that's in process.
So will we have expedited, expedited retake testing this year, then?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So it's just planning, we're doing now and testing?
For the first time.
And then we will do the expedited as a result? Perfect. Thank you.
Mark?
I am sure that the state of Virginia and other school systems with pre-Labor Day starts increasingly will find ways to merge this extra time for test retaking and everything else. 68 years ago, my mother identified me as impatient. She said it hasn't changed. I am impatient to see how Mr. Cumberbatch Smith succeeds, and I offer you during those weeks, pre-Labor Day, I'm your volunteer at your disposal. Please call and let me be part of making this a success, and I will be impatient to see it expand to many, if not all, of Norfolk Public Schools. The state will learn from us.
Okay. Any other questions on the waiver application or the start weight?
I have a question about, almost like the previous presentation. I'm excited about what we're doing. I still think we need to come back and look at, what is our goal? If we're still trying to get instructional days for all children and more time for all children, I don't think we should lose sight of that, if that's a goal we want to achieve. And in September, I know in the past, the state has had year-round school proposals and other innovative projects, and so if that's something that the board still deems important, I hope we will look at that this summer so that we can get those in in time for the following year.
In other words, what would success look like for this pilot program?
I get that, but I'm saying, if the goal is to have, like, I think Dr. Stewart mentioned in one time, Virginia Beach figured out how to do 183 days. We talked about trying to add more days. Dr. King has talked about more time.
Right.
And so more time for all students with compensation for staff and all this involved with that, to me is a different model than this exciting model that has the volunteer component to it.
All right. We can move on to the pre-K4 update.
And it's me again. Well, it's coming up, I'll just, oh, it's coming there. All right. Good afternoon again. I'm reporting on the pre-K, preschool initiative. In January, we were informed, let me back up. The state of Virginia was, the US government, US Department of Education was preparing a big grant program to expand pre-K4 programs. The state of Virginia had identified high-poverty districts and invited them to participate in the state application. Norfolk chose to do that, and in January, we were notified that the state application had been accepted and that Norfolk would be included. Recently, we got our information for exactly how much money we had and what we could do with it. And that's what this is going to be a quick overview of, which is our expansion program, and this is the great news, $7,299, $99,622 will be Norfolk's four-year share of these funds, which will give us the money for 10 classrooms, which is 180 children, because we have 18 children in each classroom, plus enough funding for 27 additional children to attend the pre-K, preschool, pre-K programs at ODU and Norfolk State, for a total of 207 additional students that we will be able to provide spaces for over the next four years and hopefully beyond that. And what puts the plus in plus? We're already in the VPI program. What makes this a plus program? Key elements are 10 newly completely furnished classrooms. We get $25,000 to furnish each classroom. In answer to a couple of the questions that have come up, we do not do any major retrofitting of these rooms. That's not part of the grant, but we did get confirmation that we could paint them, repaint them. We already have, that's already been priced out by our school plan, who were extremely helpful in this whole process. We could put carpet if we needed it, and we can build cubbies. The, an invitation was sent out to all schools as we look for, and Tamela Richardson, who was here with us today, is our pre-K4 coordinator and who has really been working very hard to make this happen for us. Once all the open classrooms were identified, then she and a member of Rex Gay staff went out to look at the schools to see if they made, if they met the requirements physically. And also, we were looking for schools that we could get more of our high-poverty kids in. We don't always have room in those schools because we already have a lot of our pre-K classes there. But anyway, that's how they were chosen, that's why we have those, and it's a full-day program, and it looks for children who are at or below 200% of the poverty line. So these are really the high-poverty kids. It's much more comprehensive in that it includes full services for parents. There's all kinds of parent services wrapped into this program. And also, the program provides for extensive professional development. We have highly qualified teachers, but we're going to make them beyond highly qualified with this program. And these are the schools after, at the final selection of where the classes will be. Some of the schools that we first were looking at did not have the space, or there were problems with the facility. But this is where they are. This is their location, but not limited. In other words, they can come, if we have kids on waiting list at one, in one area where they don't have enough rooms, we can have them at the other area. So they're selected and they're waiting now for the first check to arrive so they could start painting. In fact, I just got permission today for Mrs. Richardson to actually be able to choose the color for the classrooms, which is a big deal, and was hard for me to give up. All right. And then I just had, this slide is just from last month that I put on, in case you had any questions about the difference. And that's basically what it is, and I'd like to say that we had our registration yesterday, our first kickoff registration for both the pre-K4 and the pre-K3 program. Over 500 families came to pick up their packets. Of those 500, 322 actually completed them and were processed. And our next, that was at Southside Aquatic Club, and then our next one will be on the 14th in Ocean View, at the new library there. And that they're placed in each quadrant of the city to make sure that we can be as close in proximity to all of our parents as possible. So we're excited. It's a big, big difference for Norfolk Public Schools.
So, Ms. Camson, are you saying that if there's students that are on the waitlist, for example, at Suburban Park, that they could potentially be considered to be into one of the classes at the schools that you named on the list that are receiving the 10 new classes?
Right. And that's always been the case. If a school had, even in the regular VIP classes, if you have a space, we're not leaving it open while we have a child somewhere in the city that doesn't have a place to be.
Okay. And so transportation would be provided to those?
No. Transportation is not provided for our pre-K classes.
Right. So, so what are we going to do for those students who, because they're, when I looked at the list, the list for children on the waitlist, for Crossroads, for example, there's 26 kids on the waitlist, and on Suburban Park, there's 42 kids on the waitlist, so...
And unfortunately, those schools didn't have a space. Because what we also did was look at the waitlist.
Okay.
And if there's no space, that was, so we looked to see where we had space. That's what we had to start with, where there's, where's their space. Because we have a lot of schools that we really wanted to put more classes in, and those schools are already becoming overcrowded.
Okay. So, so if a student gets accepted, the parent has to figure out the transportation then? If they're from an, from not within the, because all students that are pre-K have to be picked up and dropped off?
By a parent.
By the parent.
Not even dropped off, the parents have to deliver them to the door and pick them up right there. Because we're very, with those babies, we're very careful.
Okay. And that's it for right now.
Could you expand on the types of parent services that are offered?
I could, but I think the better person to do that is Ms. Richardson, if she'd like to come up, because she's really buried in this. She lives it and breathes it.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the comprehensive services, we are looking at teaming up with the Department of Social Services, and they have actually been very instrumental in the writing of this grant for the state. So we would be looking at additional screenings for families. The grant also funds a separate parenting, family engagement specialist that would go in and do home visits. So of course, if there's screenings that may indicate potential disabilities, we'll be able to pull in vision, dental screenings, all of those types of things that look at the overall health of the child, mental health, and it's not going to be just isolated to the students, but to the entire family.
Follow-up. Are there any opportunities in this grant for services such as educational services for parents?
That is something that, if the budget allows, that is possibility to have GED courses built in, those types of things. It's just how far we can get that money to stretch under the comprehensive services, but that's definitely something that's recommended by the state, and so we're playing around with the dollars to see if we can do that as well.
20 years ago, I started talking about coherent and comprehensive planning. First presentation tonight wisely talked about how we can do what Dr. King wanted to do when he first came here and have more time before school, during school, after school, summer school, all those times. The second presentation talked about our pilot project, which will begin to teach the state on how to use pre-Labor Day starts for student benefits. I can't think of a better way to have more time. I can't think of a better way to have more time than pre-K four, and then eventually Dr. Gabriel pre-K three. But in this particular case, this addition fits in with the whole pattern of a coordinated, comprehensive look at how to help our students. You know, the state of Virginia incorrectly decided they were going to take over our schools. We said no. Most all of the school systems across the state of Virginia joined us in that, and the state said unconstitutional. But the question that the judge, a Norfolk judge, asked was, is this the best thing you could do is to take over our schools? The best thing we could do are the things that I've heard tonight, and there's going to be nothing better than this. You know who says that? The President of the United States, the Congress, the mayor of Norfolk, the business community of Norfolk, and the governor of Virginia. Thanks for what you're going to do.
Thank you. We are excited, very excited.
I'm really excited about this, too, and I'm really excited that Virginia was chosen. Specifically Norfolk was chosen as a recipient for this grant, but I have a very significant question here. Pre-K is supposed to benefit those students who need it the most. That's what the criteria is, those students who absolutely need it the most. So in these schools that we've chosen to have the classroom, I understand they have a room available that we can accommodate the students. However, Bayview, on the list right here, and I know this list may not be incredibly current, but Bayview has no one on the waitlist. If you go to Camp Allen, Camp Allen only has six children on the waitlist. If you go to Coleman Place, Coleman Place has zero on the waitlist. However, if you go to other schools, the ones that I had named in the email, Suburban Park, Lindenwood, they have lots of children on the waitlist, so. So, so there's just no physical space in that, in that, so can we, can we think out of the box and maybe do something with transportation to help get those kids to these classrooms? Because they're the ones in the areas where we look at schools and our focus and priority schools that need that extra help. Can we do that?
Well, I think, and we will probably be able to answer this question soon. Once we know how these seats are being filled, I think the answer to that question is going to be a significant one.
Okay.
Because are we beginning to address some of the students that need it the most? Based on, the formula's the same, but are we successful in getting those students to these locations? And who's signing up to do so, to take advantage of these locations? And that may be a premature question now, or can we speak to that now and what we think we see? Because what we did was based on where we had space and could offer it, because we wanted to be budget neutral and make good decisions about how we used to grant dollars. You know, so is that?
Somewhat premature, but we have, we are, Mr. Kleinfeld is waiting for us to get more guidance on what we can really do to make this happen. There's the, there's been the talk of possibly having drop sites where there's a run from the, the high knee area at school where there is no space to these, but we again have to look at the limitations that we have within our budget. But we do realize that there are some target areas that just where the buildings, there's no capacity to hold them. And so we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that the children that are most at need get into these spots. And by the grant requirements, we have to make sure that's done.
Right.
So we're really going to definitely think outside of the box and see what the money will do to support our efforts to do that.
Are there, it sounds like to me there's stipulations that, that parents have to drop, deliver the child and pick them up. So it's just not a matter of, of getting kids on the bus. There's that issue you have to deal with, too. So are you thinking busing the parents, too?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm so appreciative that we have the grant. I'm so glad we're going to be able to reach a hundred and eighty more students. I would, I would wish, I would hope that we could reach as many of the students that are at the most need for this, who are on the waitlist already, and if we can do that, if it means us modifying some policy, school board policy, then that's what we do in order to make an exception to accommodate those students. So whatever we have to do to get these students in these schools to these classrooms, and I would say we try to make, or at least have those conversations, see what we can do.
My personal feeling is, is that if a parent has the opportunity to put their child in a highly qualified pre-K program at no expense to them, I think they'll find a way to get them there. They'll have family members. They'll do whatever they have to do.
But, and, and that's an option, that's what, that's an option right now that we have.
That's exactly what we have right now. So, and it's been, and as you can see, we don't have any problem filling the slots we have now.
I think you're, it'll happen.
I hope so.
Yeah, I was going to ask a budget question. So what's our commitment beyond the grant period? And are we, well, maybe I'll just ask that one first. What's our commitment beyond the grant period?
Well, it's my understanding it's a three-year grant, essentially, four-year grant, but it's really going to cover three academic school years?
Four.
Four. So beyond that, we would have to obviously make the decision to continue to fund. So if we're looking at seven point three million divided by four years, then that would at least be the annual cost that we would have to be prepared to absorb in the base budget four years from now. And yes, that seems like a long way away, but when you have double-digit budget deficits each year and your revenues aren't growing, we've got a factory, and what's the cost of maintaining the program? So yeah, it's going to be an ongoing cost to continue it.
Yes.
That's always a challenge, but on the other hand, we have four times two hundred and seven children that we know will benefit, and then we hope that we'll be able to do something. It's a little bit less than that, because the money's front-loaded for the setup, so that each, each of the following three years don't cost as much as the first year because of the setup of the classrooms.
Yeah, my only point was going to be that if that's something that we are aware of now, that as we send our budget over and as we have conversations, that we stress that now, since early learning is part of the city's priorities and the poverty commission and so forth, that we let the council know now that we need them to begin to look at this four years out, so that we, when we get to that point, we'll be able to sustain the program.
Dr. Gabriel's concern, as we get a presentation on the DeJohn Richter study soon, and a major recommendation, and where that is, I think that fits in with the four-year pilot project here, because it could be that there's another whole school available with a lot of classroom space. But we'll hear about that later on today, so that's another piece of the puzzle of our thing. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
So, so we'll hear that later today, but it's kind of exciting that what Dr. Gabriel is concerned about and what Dr. Thornton is always worried about, because he sees that a little bit of seed money sometimes can end up a budget headache several years. That's in the timeframe of three to four years. There may be that facility and start to ameliorate some of the costs. So I'm looking forward to that presentation.
As, as am I.
That's it.
Clarify, we're going to hear DeJohn Richter on April fifteenth. Not later today.
I hope I didn't give the secret.
No, just wanted to clarify. And then, Ms. Richardson, I agree with you, too. You know, if we can now start measuring the success, publicizing the outcome, so that we know that these pre-Ks children are succeeding based on the goals that we've set out and based on the measures that we've said equal success, then we can go to community, Antares Community Foundation, United for Children, all sorts of things. In addition to perhaps say, hey, can you support this funding as well, knowing that the budget is very restrictive? So I think if we start now and being creative, and speaking about out of the box, is how do we fund these continued programs and additional pre-K classrooms?
I'm a, I guess I say this all the time, I'm supportive of pre-K, but you know, we had also looked at some data last year. I mean, it was a small snapshot, because we only had it for so many years. But when you looked at the students that were in pre-K and then looked at the on-time graduation rates, you know, there are some things we need to look at. So I agree with everyone that's on the pre-K bandwagon. I do think the quality is important. But when you looked at some of that other data that we had, when those children were going through what I call the high poverty pathway, then what they were receiving early on, while it's a great thing, it, we still need to look at whether or not we're going to continue to enhance that early learning as they proceed all the way through, through graduation. So going back to what Dr. Stewart says, I think it's important that we still look at in the complete context of the poverty targets and specialty programs and other things, so this investment that we're making truly is going to yield the type of results that we want to see as they, as the students matriculate throughout the entire K through twelve program.
Ray?
I agree with you wholeheartedly, and that's why I'm excited, because of the stuff, the programs we're developing at Camp Estella and the school at Broad Creek and the academy at Lakewood. I mean, we've got, we've got things in the pipeline, and obviously the pre-K is not a panacea, but it's a good foundational step. And I'm excited that we're doing it, but yes, we've got, still got a lot of work to do.
Yes.
Very well. Thank you very much. Thank you. The final item under two point oh one, the teacher workload focus group.
Ms. Mead, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so I don't have a PowerPoint. I hope you can handle. Now, this is just a quick oral report. We are just beginning the planning stages of this. I just wanted to report to you that we are in the process of gathering a forum of teachers. We each, each of the executive directors has chosen three teachers of the year from last school year, and, and have, we have invited them to be a part of a forum to talk about reducing teacher workload, what we can use the cliche, take off their plates. They have embraced this eagerly. They have been thrilled to be invited. They're looking forward to our meeting. So the first meeting we will have with them, and so there will be twelve of them, and the four of us will meet on April twenty-third at the academy at Lakewood. They've been given an assignment to poll their fellow teachers and come to us with some ideas, and we will start from there. So that's where we're, we are with the planning of that. That's it. Question? I'm sorry? April twenty-third at three PM at the academy at Lakewood.
What's your target date to complete the, your effort?
Probably, well, I, I. Anybody have a target? We haven't talked about a target date to complete the effort, but I would.
I think the first meeting, I think the first meeting is our planning phase, so we'll come up with the timeline. And I don't think it should take more than a month and a half.
Mm-hmm, so probably by the end of this school year.
Yeah, because there was a, a report that came out today that addressed this issue even more about not only taking stuff off the plate, but on the retention side. And I know that we usually have our board retreat, was it first, first in July, something like that? First July one, so I would just like to put out there, if it's possible, to have it in time for us to be able to discuss it as we set priorities for the upcoming year, that, that would be good to have, I think.
I see that as very possible, very possible. Any more questions?
Okay, yes, Ed.
Has there been any consideration given to having representatives of the educational associations be engaged and involved with that process?
We can do that. That's a good suggestion.
I'm just wondering whether, you know, that might not be a wise thing to do.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Another questions on this matter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item two point oh two, academic affairs. We have reports on summer school plan review, professional development plan review, and the special education plan review. Dr. King? I guess I just did your. And I would just encourage us all, food and board, that we have about, we had, yeah, thirty minutes left later for this portion.
An instruction will be talking to us about the summer school plan and the professional development plan.
Thank you.
And good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Our summer school plan should look somewhat familiar for you. There are not a lot of, there are not any drastic changes from what we did last summer. We will have a five-week program once again that provides instruction and literacy and numeracy at the elementary and middle school levels. The dates will begin on July, excuse me, June twenty-ninth to July twenty-ninth for students. There will be a day before and a day after for teachers to prep for summer school, as well as to close out summer school. We will offer, and I notice up here on the slide, it says that we will offer elementary school for grades three through five using district funds, but we will actually offer grades K through five at the elementary and six through eight at the middle school. Our host sites have, we're on a rotation schedule, and we will be using Norview, Richard Bowling, Tanners Creek, Calcott-Sewell's Point, and Taylor. One thing that we do have a minor correction with is, and that was just confirmed today, with its two standalone sites being Peedy Young and Ty Water Park, we will also be adding in Jaycocks. Jaycocks will have their own standalone program that will be working in partnership with United for Children. All of our middle schools do offer their own summer school program. The focus again is primarily literacy and numeracy. However, we do offer some sessions for science and social studies for students who may need those as well at the middle school level. The high school program will be at, housed at Gravy High School this summer. We offer two semesters. We offer initial credit courses, not an awful lot of initial credit courses, but there are some. Our primary focus is on credit recovery at the high school level. Again, the sessions are listed on the slides for us, and our teachers do have a opening day for prep, as well as a closing day to close out. We will once again have some special programs offered for our students with disabilities. We have an extended annual school year program, and here we have a listing of some of the programs that we offer for enrichment. And I can tell you that some of them, we're getting quite a few phone calls about already. There's a lot of interest in those, those enrichment programs. Likewise, we have our sixth grade transition program that we've been offering for the past few years, which is a program for those kids who were fifth graders rising to sixth grade to get acclimated with their new middle schools. And we will offer drivers there once again in the classroom, as well as behind the wheel. And that would be our summer school program. Are there questions? Yes, yes, yes.
The Jaycocks program, standalone program, is that the August Ready program, or is it include a summer?
They were going to have, they're going to have a summer school cohort that is the June twenty-ninth to July twenty-ninth, and then August Ready is on top as an additional layer of support.
And the sixth grade transition? In prior years, it has been meagerly attended. How are we going to promote and to increase that, that participation in that? In my estimation, that's one of the biggest, the most difficult transitions for any student to make. And it's critical that sixth graders, or fifth graders are trans, 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 transitioned to the middle school. Anything less than a hundred percent is, is really not acceptable.
Well, it's, it, we can't make it a mandatory program, because it's in the summer.
I understand, but what we should shoot for.
But one of the things that we're going to do is, working with executive directors and principals, is to make sure that we get that notification out early to folks, so they can have it on their calendar, as well as making sure that our counselors are working with the students to let them know what's around the corner. It's all, it's all about the PR piece on it, making sure it's out there in front of them.
And in sales, they, they teach, don't sell the steak, sell the sizzle. You gotta, you gotta sell the benefit. What's the benefit to the students and their families for attending this transition?
And I, I think in addition to that.
And I, I think in addition to that, um, getting information on why parents don't su- support or have their children in place for it, I think will give us some insight on maybe how to meet some of those challenges that parents may be experiencing in the summer, for whatever, whether it's lack of understanding about how important it is. I know transportation is provided for it.
And the feedback that we did receive, because we do try to find out what's working and what's not working. And the feedback really was around getting advance notice about the program, because everyone does understand how important it is to get the children ready for middle school so the kids are comfortable on their first day. But making sure that the message is received in advance so everyone has on the calendar, on the books. That was the biggest thing we heard.
Is it a conversation that parents have of, of fifth graders, you know, early on during the fifth grade year? So, you know, uh, they know it's coming, and, uh, and again, how important it is. And so, uh, I think that parent piece is, is, is the piece when it comes to this. And the children are making the decision. Most of them aren't. Warren?
Building on what Dr. Robinson just asked and what Mr. Jordan said earlier, why parents should do this. Mr. Jordan knows well, and so do you, Dr. Corbin. You've been in education for a long time. The great losses occurs over the summer. We can have a great pre-K four program, and we get the ball rolling. Well, we gotta keep the ball rolling. And over the summer is one of the most critical times. We have a friend, I have a friend on the school board in Newport News, and they have, uh, what's entitled, expanded new summer program to pilot in Newport News. The reason why I give you a copy of this is because they're very proud. And as you're going along this path for con- continuous improvement of our summer initiatives, perhaps it's just good that we can teach them something and they can teach us something because they see the same need that Mr. Jordan knows needs to exist, uh, that we've got to keep that ball rolling, that we start pre-K four. And that Mr. Rob- uh, Dr. Robinson has asked, is why do we need this? We need this because if we get that ball rolling, we gotta keep that ball rolling. And so perhaps this would be a, a friend that's not far away to, to help both of y'all to move together. But this is exciting and, and their purpose, and this is the city council that's funded this. The idea is to keep more students involved in optional summer programs and to broaden their experiences academic and otherwise. They are very proud about this new initiative that was funded by city.
Sounds good.
Thanks for.
And I will follow up with that.
Thanks for all you're gonna do.
And I will follow up.
Okay? Yes?
Last year, I recall, um, some of the parents of children with special needs, bringing some concerns about offerings during, during the summer. I don't know, are we doing anything different there than what we did last year? I know I see the E S Y., but is anything different?
Other than the extended school year program, which I have information on, I'm not sure, and I'd have to defer to Mrs. Janice James Mitchell. I know she hates being put on the spot, but, um.
Well, I, I, she might speak to it when she comes up a little later, but I guess my.
She's on camera now.
I guess my point is, you know, I don't know the, I don't recall all the specific questions and what we, how we addressed them, or if we even needed to address them last year. But if that need is there, I'm just asking whatever is appropriate to make sure that we can get ahead of it, uh, this time. And then, um, from the, from the board's perspective, is there anything that you all need from us as you prep, um, for this, for this initiative? I don't know.
Continued support, a few of our programs, um, require some additional funding, and we're working internally to see how we can make all this work for them because they're great programs and they reach some of our students who might not otherwise have these opportunities. So we want to make sure that we use the available funding. So we'll, we'll be in touch.
And then my, my last question slash comment on the, uh, credit recovery side. At a future meeting, I like some additional convincing that a child who spends all year in the class, uh, not being, not meeting the goals that we have set, then goes to credit recovery for four, six weeks, and all of a sudden, everything is, uh, fine and dandy. So if there's some way to get an update on the credit recovery side to make sure that, uh, the students are not only earning the credit, but they also are demonstrating, um, mastery of the content. That has bothered me, and I'd just like to get some sense soon that they're, they're really getting the, the skills that they need to be successful as they move on. So I don't know if that's something that you all have seen or have the concern about, but.
Yes, it actually is something that we've been looking at ourselves, so we can certainly share that information with you.
Ed, I'm sorry.
Just interested in your enrichment opportunities, um, getting ready for algebra, and how that is advertised in the district, and what kids are, are using this type of a program. Are we expanding these programs?
We actually have expanded over the past few years. It used to be that we would offer one section of it, and for the past couple of years, we've added on another and another. Our math department, our math office is headed by Bart Irwin, and he works with the math department chairs at all of our middle and high schools to target specific students. And those students who we feel might, um, experience challenges, we make sure that they get the information and that they're invited in. It's actually shared with all students, but we do a little bit of extra follow-up with those who might need a little extra push.
So just where is that, how is that done, uh, over, uh, in the enrichment opportunity over the summer?
It, you, do you mean the, the format of it?
Yes, I mean, in other words, is it, where, where is it done, for instance? Uh, is it done at different schools and this kind of?
No, no, it, it, it's housed where the, where the secondary program is. Like this year will be housed at Granby High School, and the students would ride the same buses as the Granby High School kid, well, the kids who are going to the Granby program. Um, and we will typically, for the last two years, I think we've had two to three teachers who've worked in the program.
These type of programs, to me, seem like they're ideal for helping those students who are getting ready to go into algebra and are having difficulty that way. So I hope that, um, those, those types of programs are really advertised well in the district so we can see more classes put in place. I think, um, it may impact, um, our, our, our scores in the math area.
And I think they, I think they have impacted our scores in a positive way because we have seen an increased enrollment each summer. Now, those are, those are easy sells.
All right, now next slide, professional development.
And with the professional development plan, we do have a new professional development senior coordinator who's with us. She's transitioning into her role, so I will speak for this, uh, for her this time. Uh, Laura Masterson, she, Masterson is in the back, and we won't make her move forward this time around. I just wanted to put her on the spot, you know? We'll open with, uh, I forgot I had to click her. Um, as we all know, research shows that the rubber meets the road in our classrooms. So we do an awful lot of professional development here in North Public Schools for our teachers, as well as for our administrators. In fact, each one of our teachers is required to earn twelve hours of professional development credit towards their recertification, and our administrators are required to earn eighteen hours of credit towards their recertification each year. One of the things that we've discovered in looking at research is that whatever we do when it comes to professional development, it has to be based on what students need to learn and what students need to be able to do. We do create an assessment that we use. Our schools create professional development plans. Our district-level professional development plan is based on a needs assessment and looking at student achievement data. We then turn, in turn, make sure that all, not all, but the majority of our professional development is actually job embedded, and it's something that the teachers can take with them and implement right away. One of the things, one of the challenges that we do face is the continuous need to offer additional professional development. As you know, we offer tons, and we have built-in professional development days throughout our calendar, which we'll talk about in just a moment. The ultimate goal of any professional development is to build capacity. Our approach to doing this is to make sure that our, we, our professional development is research-based and that there's follow-up training and support. One of the things that we continuously find after we do our professional development sessions, when we send out our surveys to determine how effective those sessions were, would be that teachers ask for additional time to implement the strategies. Strategies in themselves don't have any gain. They don't have any impact if you don't have that time to actually implement what you've learned, get some support, have some monitoring and some feedback. And it's a continuous cycle. So sometimes when we do these presentations, I know you wonder to yourselves, what's different? Well, there's not going to be an awful lot different except for the focus of the professional development because it's a continuous cycle. And again, we're trying to build in more time for our teachers to actually own that training that they've encountered and then impart that learning to our students. Again, our focus has to be on student-centered learning, integrated with school improvement, and it has to be active in order for it to be sustained. The focus areas for the upcoming school year will be response to intervention. Again, this is not new. This is a continuation of something we've done for the past few years. Response to intervention, in a nutshell, means we're focusing on assessment, data analysis, and tier intervention, or as we lovingly call it, the cycle for results. We're also focusing on differentiated instruction, meaning we want to make sure that our teachers are prepared to meet students where they are and move them to the next level. And then lesson planning, making sure that what our teachers are doing is aligned to what our state curriculum frameworks require. Some of the opportunities that our teachers engage in will be collaborative development of lessons, um, collective analysis of student work, because there's a great deal of, um, synergy and, and movement around collective analysis of student work, scoring things collaboratively. There's great power in that to make sure that we're all on the same page and we have the same expectations for students. And using our specialists and coaches or peer obs- observations followed by feedback. The professional development days that we have in the district are listed here, and you already know, we offer professional development many, many, many times outside of those. We have specialists in the district, at the district level, as well as in the buildings, whose primary purpose is to go into classrooms every day and model, co-teach, observe, give feedback. So professional development is always in process. Some things that we're doing to make our PD more cost-effective, as well as effective in implementation, would be to align our professional development with district and school initiatives. Also, we're providing high-quality research content plus time to discuss. I keep going back to that, having that opportunity to own the learning. Some of the groups or people who will provide professional development in the district, of course, central office staff, or master teachers and institutions of higher learning. But if you drop down to that bottom one, those would be the, the most important, are building administrators, teachers, specialists, and staff. Sometimes when we have the conversation about providing professional development, we immediately look for a consultant, but we have a lot of knowledge in the district, and we are capitalizing on that knowledge base now. Implications in terms of budget and policy, we are realigning our resources. We do this quite frequently to see where we, where we are in terms of grants and local dollars to make sure that our teachers get the training that they need and the support that they need. We're also moving towards making sure that we provide written communication of resources and practices. This is something that we really did a great job with in twenty fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, this current school year, and we're gonna continue that and to monitor and evaluate for effectiveness. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Dr. Haywood, Reverend Haywood?
I have two questions. First question is, um, have, looking at building climate, I've heard a number of building leaders and administrators say that there's a relationship between professional development and the climate in the building. And so we, we've increased professional development over the last couple of years, and yet it, it does not seem to have impacted the climate that's in the building. Is, is our professional development designed really to help with that type of environment? I mean, does professional development make a difference in terms of what is happening in terms of morale and climate in the building?
Yes and no. Yes, it can help with the, if a teacher feels good about what they're doing, if, if they get the professional development and the, the monitoring and the feedback, um, around areas where, where they need a little shoring up, then yes, it can improve the climate. However, there are so many different things that go into climate. I, I can't attribute it all to professional development. And we do offer professional development on climate, building, uh, building morale and climate in your buildings. It, it, there's not an easy answer on that. Again, it's, building climate changes from one location to the next location. And, you know, I, I just can't sum it all up in one quick little snippet for you. I can just tell you that when it comes to improving teachers' knowledge base, that does tend to make things better. But that's not gonna be the only thi- that's not gonna be the only factor. There have to be a couple of other things that occur in order to improve climate.
Yeah, and I, I, I recognize that. I just, um, I hear that so often, that, you know, that we've got a problem with inability where we need professional development. And, um, and I'm, I'm not always sure, I, I can't always see the correlation between, you know, the, the, the development and actually what happens, goes on in the building.
Yeah.
Along, along the same line, um, what Dr. Corbin has mentioned, I feel will begin to help further move the needle around climate because two things I think are important. One is that when you provide professional development that includes the input of teachers and, and analysis of what the need of the school may be, based on that input, whether it's from the, uh, survey approach or observation approach, in addition to the central level analysis of what the needs around, uh, staff development may be, then those things begin to, when they're high-quality and they're effective, then they begin to help the educator in the classroom become more effective, thus more successful in the, in the classroom, thus resulting in better climate. We know that. So the input of teachers, analyzing where they are, and building staff development based on the input and analysis of data. To do so, that's one thing that I think we have to remember. And the other piece is that around climate, uh, building level leadership and honing in on the needs and supporting teachers and supporting all staff, classified and certified, in the way that we know we all would like to, to do so and need to. I think, uh, is also important. And, um, the division has moved forward with an initiative around, uh, further leadership development with the program that's in place that started back in near October and will, will span into next year as well. So that building level leadership piece will help, in, in my view, because that helps support the needs of teachers as, as well as what Dr. Corbin mentioned about, uh, in, input and laser-like focus and aligning it. Now, that's not a panacea, it's not, of course, overnight. But, but what is, what does garner results pretty quickly is showing that support and positive reinforcement for, uh, teachers and for staff and, and providing professional development around how to do that, which is what she mentioned, so.
Dr. Gabriel, you got a question?
I had a second question I'd like to ask.
Sure.
Um, that second question concerning the, um, uh, what I saw you said implications here about additional grants. Who's, who's writing these grants? So where, you know, how do you come about?
It varies. Some of them I write, some of them members of my team write, some of them people out in the school write. It just varies depending on the source of the grant and what the focus of the grant is.
Yeah. And this goes back to, um, what we have identified. At least we've had these discussions around the school board table about the need for a grant writer. And, um, I still think that we need to have someone who could write not only for your department, but for, um, many areas within the district. And so I, I, you know, I, I know that that has budget implications, but somehow we have not been able to move this, what I think is an excellent concept, into, um, into the budget. And I, and I think, and I'm just saying this to my school board colleagues, that, um, I think it's important for us to really address this issue because I'm sure that writing grants takes time. And, uh, I, I know that you have all the time in the world to paint your fingernails and eat bonbons, but, um, um, you know, it would be great if we. but, you know, it would be great if we were, if we did have that kind of a thing, so.
Noelle. I definitely am in support of a grant writer. I know how valuable they are in the medical community, and usually they pay for their own salary with the grants that they write. So I don't know how that translates into the educational field, but anyway. Dr. Corbin, thank you for the presentation. I did read the presentation ahead of time, and I had submitted a couple of questions. I'm not sure if they had made it to you yet.
They did.
If you wouldn't mind, can you update the board on where we are with our cohorts, our gifted cohorts, and a couple of other areas that we were looking to grow some teachers that we had a need for in the district?
Right. With, we currently have a mathematics cohort that started last fall, and they will actually finish, and these will be folks who are going to become math specialists. They will actually finish next December, 2016. It's an intensive program, and they're doing really well. We also have a gifted cohort. We have two gifted cohorts. The first one has 22 participants in it, and the second one is a smaller cohort. It has 11. And the reason why they're smaller is because we did them back-to-back. And it's, you know, the pool gets a little shallow as you go. Typically, you want to do one every other year or every two years. The first one that has 22 participants will finish in December of this year, and the second one will finish next summer, 2016. We are looking to add on two other cohorts, which would be a reading specialist cohort as well as an ESL teacher cohort, folks who earn the ESL endorsement. Those would be funded also.
All right, the Title II. Title II is being used to support professional development. Is that correct? So in the, we've had some challenges around Title II. And during the presentation, you were indicating that, you know, it wasn't a lot different. But can you speak to what you're looking at in terms of doing some things differently so that we fully and effectively utilize all the Title II resources that we have?
Right. One of the things that we've done a little differently is we've reached out to the Virginia Department of Ed a little bit earlier than we had in previous years, just to get feedback and have some conversation on some things. We've also done some realignment with the grant, because of course, anytime you want to make any modification to the grant, you have to do a grant amendment, and then you do a budget amendment. We've done a grant, we're in the process of doing a grant amendment now so that we can take care of some of our initiatives in the district for, in terms of things like Avid, IB, a couple, they're not coming to me right quick, as quickly as possible, but we're making sure that we have realigned our funds so that they can be appropriately encumbered and in a timely manner. We've also done some things in terms of some checks and balances, whereas it's not, it's not resting solely in any one pocket. So there are multiple eyes looking at things, and there's a lot of communication and a lot of meetings to discuss and make sure everyone's on the same page.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Dr. Corbin. And so one other piece on the academic affairs, special education planning review.
Sorry. Ms. Janet, Janice James Mitchell. Let me say it again so I'm sure it's right. Janice James Mitchell will be our senior director for special education will be presenting.
Good afternoon, Dr. King, Dr. Houston, and members of the board. Thank you for your time this evening as I present the annual plan.
Thank you.
Every year, we have to complete an application to receive grant money from the Virginia Department of Education. As always, the annual plan is a required plan that must be completed in order for us to receive the funding. It serves as a formal agreement between VDOE and local school divisions, and the funding is contingent upon full approval of the plan. There are several components that are required in the plan, and I will review them. First, we have the superintendent certification and LEA policy assurances. When the superintendent signs off on the application, it is stating that we are following the laws and regulations, NPS policy and procedures of students that are in place, laws that are in place for students with disabilities. The plan also has to be reviewed with CAC, and that was done on March 17th, 2015, at the CAC meeting. And once that is done, as I sit before you today, we have to have school board approval. We do have a local and regional jail inter-agency agreement, and we are responsible for servicing those students or those children in the jail. VDOE reimburses us for our services there, and we do have two teachers. We also serve the students. We also serve the students regardless of their residency. Each year, we also have to have an implementation narrative of the plan from the previous year. And that is to just give VDOE a brief description of, did we do what we intended? And last year, and each year, the grant is usually intended or spent more on personnel. But we did update technology throughout the division, whether it was in our office, learning support office, or at the school. We provided professional development for designated teachers. We hired a facilitator to address some concerns that we had in reference to collaboration with the special education teacher and general education teacher. We also brought Hampton Roads transit tickets, travel tickets for students with disabilities, to teach them how to ride the bus, and for the first time this year, to ride the TID, which was interesting. Yeah, they liked it. They liked it. And we also brought reading and workbooks for teachers as well. In the narrative as well, we need to include private school set-aside funds. We are responsible for setting aside a certain amount of money for private school students, whether it's a private school or in a homeschool setting. So services for them, last year, we hired a part-time speech-language pathologist, part-time teacher, reading teacher. We provided transportation to students and materials and supplies for the teachers to implement the individual service plan. Maintenance of effort. Each year, we must spend at least the same amount of local or local-plus-state dollars for the current school year for the delivery of special education and related services. And the same amount or more that was spent the previous year. There are two applications, the flow-through application, which is 611, and the preschool application. 611 flow-through application. It's not, you can't see it too well, but what I will do is go down each object code and give you a description pretty much. Okay. Okay. Okay, well, then I'm finished. If you have any questions.
Warren.
Yes, sir.
You have an advisory committee.
Yes.
They understand and support this?
Yes. Mr. Jordan was at the meeting when I presented the annual plan.
And their expression has been, we understand it and we support it.
The presentation was very well-done detail, much longer than what we have here. It was during Hampton University's entry into the NCAA tournament. But we also, I just wanted, in addition to that, I did email some of the members of the CAC to let them know that this was also being presented at the work session today so that they could get an opportunity to hear the presentation. Of course, we'll be prepared to vote in a couple of weeks, but they did get a chance to review it and comment and provide input and so forth, so.
Courtney.
So I believe I emailed earlier, and I just wanted to ask you again for the benefit of all to know, which gets to your point about we have to spend equal to or greater from the year previous. So can you validate for us that in fact, that will take place and has taken place in years past?
It has from the, I wish I had sent everybody a chart. I had a chart to show the comparison that we did make maintenance of effort last year and the year before. And so each year, it is projected until we get the actuals. The maintenance of effort report is not due until October. So what we did was use the amount from last school year until we get the actuals.
So if I could just ask, when we get to that October timeframe, could we just get that report to make sure that we're spending equal to or greater so that we're validating our use of the grant funding? And I only ask the question because when you look at the report, it asks, it only depicts one year. And so I just wanted to validate that in fact, we were in keeping with our grant requirement for maintenance of effort. So thank you. You're welcome. But I would ask for that report later in the year so we can validate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we're ready for item 2.03, school leadership development. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, school leadership development will consist of the updates as outlined and present us a coming report.
Dr. Melissia.
Good afternoon again. Okay, so today, we will be giving you updates on three areas. Well, actually four, but one has been already covered a little bit. First, we will be doing an overview of the trends that we have seen in walkthroughs throughout the division. We'll talk a little bit about safety nets. We will talk a little bit about how we've used the 10 minutes extra time that has been added to the school day, and then a short open campus update. So I'm going to start with our focus walks. And again, these focus walks are based on approximately 2,000 classroom visits, and that consists of school division focus walk visits done by content area coordinators, school division administrators, principals, school leadership teams, as well as focus walks done by executive directors and principals in the schools. So it's a lot of information. And so we've chosen to share with you five strengths and five areas of growth that seemed to have run thread-like through the focus walk feedback. And as you can see, they, they're up there for you to see. One is that we have, we felt, we feel very successful in achieving alignment with the standards of learning objectives. And we are seeing ICANN statements posted, and this is an elementary thing. ICANN statements are kid version-friendly, kid-friendly versions of objectives. They are not the actual objectives. The actual objectives are found in the teacher's lesson plans, but the ICANN objectives are written up for students to be able to see throughout the lesson and throughout the day. We, we saw a strand of effective classroom management, very, very good classroom discipline, checking for understanding during lessons, and guided reading is being implemented with fidelity. I am going to stop there and ask if you have questions about that slide, because each slide is rather different. And so these are our strengths. Does anyone have any questions about the strengths? Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to move on then to areas of growth that were consistent through focus walk feedback. And one is, although the learning objectives in the secondary schools and the ICANN statements in the elementary schools are posted, research has shown that effective instruction happens when the, when students are very aware of what those are and understand what they are going to be expected to be able to do and know by the end of each lesson. And in order for the students to understand that, that needs to be discussed with them. It needs to be introduced to them at the beginning and then discussed throughout the lesson. So periodically, it would, the lesson would be brought back to, so let's see how this relates to our objective, see if we're making progress toward our objective. Remember what you are supposed to know and be able to do by the end of this lesson. We're finding that teachers are still not, and it's new to them. And so we're finding that they're still not doing this with consistency. Student engagement can be improved. We are seeing a lot of student compliance, but student engagement is kind of compliance on steroids kicked up a lot. And so we really want to see students engaged in the learning, excited about the learning, rather than simply doing what the teacher is telling them to do. Of course, there's always the need for increased rigor, increased depth of knowledge, higher-level thinking skills, that sort of thing. Rubrics, increased use of rubrics to strengthen assessment practices, where we expect to see when we go into classrooms, rubrics posted so that students can see an ideal model of what it is they're supposed to do. And then interactive technology. So the smartboard not being used as a blackboard, but as interactive technology for students to take part in. And those are the areas of growth that we found throughout, consistently throughout the focus walks. Questions on that? Yes, sir.
How much has our professional development been aligned with these areas for growth? I'm sure it has, but when can we expect it to start kicking in?
Well, it's kicking in gradually. It's not going to be nonexistent and then boom, kicked in. So it's gradual, kicked in, and so it's just practice. It's like anything else that we, we learn to do really well, like basketball. Those of us watching the tournaments, practice, practice, practice. So teachers need to be reminded, and what's happening is, it goes back to feedback given to them during observations and walkthroughs. So when they're told they need to practice some more, and what we do is we say to the teachers, this is an area of growth, we need to see this. We'll be back in X amount of days or X amount of weeks. We expect to see it again. And so just practice working on it, practice working on it. So it's coaching, it's coaching. And so hopefully, and we're seeing it, it's gradually growing to where it's commonplace use. Does that answer your question? Okay. Any more questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question, but, you know, this is my world for 40 years. And I love, and I love item one and two.
Yes.
Because when a child knows that the reason for subtraction is that when he buys, he or she buys something at the store, that they know how much money to expect back, that's engagement. They get engaged when they know that, as stated as a lesson objective. And so my question will be to you and your three colleagues, the four leaders. Remember, before the end of the school year, I'm going to ask you, what barriers have you all removed individually? And you don't have to wait to a meeting like this to tell me. I would love it if each of you would stop me, catch me, and say, these are the barriers that I've removed, but for me, those first two are critical. Are we saying why? I want to make sure you walk out of the store with the right amount of money. And, don't you think this- And, don't you think this is important? Are you there? See, I really think that those things make sense. And when Dr. King came and started standardizing the language of the focus, focus areas of the formative evaluation, I think the standardization of language, until it gets to the student level, it's not going to work. But I think it's there. Probably you just have to refine your ability to see it. That's, that's giving them the benefit of the doubt, right?
And the more our teachers get to be masters in their fields, they will do that, that will come naturally to them. They're selling their product, is what they're doing. And I always say that drama should be included in, you know, teaching prep program because they need to sell their product and they need to entertain. They need to be really excited. I found in, in, I found in my career that that comes from a true passion for, for the content, for what you're teaching and what you're learning, and to really be able to excite children about learning for learning's sake. So I think it's coming.
I think those two areas are there. I bet it's there more, yeah, I bet you'll see it more. And I think that's one of the most exciting things that I think Dr. King brought to us, the cycle of results and all of these things. So I bet the next time you give this report, you'll see more of it.
So here's a question that I'm asking in all earnestness. Is the trending that you're seeing as a result of the focus walk, are you forecasting or do you see possible increase in student achievement as a result of this? Are you expecting that because of these focus walks, your scores on the tests will, will be significantly increased?
Yes. Student, focus on student achievement and student learning is always our end product. And so by going into the classrooms and when we're in there, we do talk to students and we ask them questions like, what are you learning? How do you know you're doing the right thing? When they're asked that and they can articulate an answer, then we know we've been successful.
So you have different teams of focus walks.
Yes.
Are you able to compare the teams and see, is there one team that is working better than another team? And have you been able to, as a result of that, you know, compare what is going on in the district and the effectiveness of these different teams?
Yeah. And, and part of that, and what is enhancing that is we are doing, getting ARP training from the state, which is teaching us how to standardize feedback and making sure that what, what I, if I go into a classroom and you go into a classroom, we're looking for the same things, we're seeing the same things, and then we come back and we compare. And so we're, we've been able to do that, and we've, that's been a huge growth experience and a lot of learning.
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman. Would that, would that mean then that the team that's most effective, we will see scores that are, are increased in those schools? Would that be a natural inference?
Well, the team is not coaching the teacher. The team is reporting the feedback to the principal, and then the principal is coaching the teacher. And we're helping the principals be the best coaches ever. So they are giving really good feedback to their teachers. So the team, all the team does is give, and we've worked hard on this this year, evidence-based feedback rather than subjective feedback. So, so the, the team reports what they see and hear, gives that information to the principal and to us. We work with the principal on how to develop the teacher in their growth areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when focus walks are done with fidelity and we reach the standardization that we strive to secure, then it will mean improved student performance. And so I mention that because the purpose of that focus walk is to do your, to inspect what we expect in terms of the cycle. Are, are students learning from an aligned curriculum based on what the SOLs require? Where is the evidence that the formative assessments are given on an ongoing basis? Where is the evidence that there are ongoing analyses of those results to determine that students are mastering the standards? And what, what do we do when they excel? What do we do when students don't master the standards? That's the purpose of that focus walk, to check for those items and have a mechanism to, usually in a rubric standpoint or whatever the layout that the executive directors agree upon around the standard process. And then they gather that data and analyze it, and then that should turn into action. We're not where we want to be with that, with full fidelity. Your question will center on, if I understood you correctly, whether we're seeing improved student achievement based on that. I would submit to you that the, the better, the more effective the school is with being able to have its own instructional PLCs and teams that are doing those focus walks around those things, key questions, and then turning it into action, then those, those schools will see improved student achievement. The purpose of central offices to support that and look for evidence that is going deeper and schools are increasing around having teams to do so. So once that happens, then it does mean improved student achievement. But we're not where we want to be yet with that, but, but better, I would say.
So the next three areas, the safety nets and extra time over there.
You can go ahead and present, and we'll hold questions for you.
Yeah. And, and these, you know, th, these are just factual. This is a report on what the safety nets have been used, how they've been used, how safety net money has been used. Much of it is being used in part-time personnel, doing tiered remediation for students or tiered enrichment for students, additional time such as Saturday campus and camps and things of that nature. And there have been some master schedule revisions to implement safety nets during And then the ten extra minutes. Principals are, are liking these ten extra minutes. There is, ten minutes is a long time when you're teaching kids. And so they have revised their master schedules to allow for increased reading and math instruction, increased safety net time, adding minutes to extend the day for the most impact as needed by each individual school. And also in secondary, one of the class periods is used for announcements, and so they've extended those periods so that more instruction can take place in the time for, in that class period and not taken up by announcements. And then finally, I am going to give this for Mr. Coleman, who I don't think is back yet from, he had to go out to a school. Open campus updates, and this is very exciting. The, there are eighty-six course credits earned to date. Twelve different students have passed a combination of thirteen SOLs, and you can see those listed. One overage for middle-grade student has earned enough credits to be classified as a sophomore by the end of this school year. And then listed are some of the graduates of or achievers of trades academies and certificate programs. Eight students were accepted in the UPS Center. We have restaurant manager certification, tie-water builders, building trades academy, forklift certification, food handler certification. And potentially, there will be up to ten graduates in June and another twelve at the end of summer school. The, they, the students must stay on track, and some can see the end very close. And so they are doubling up on their sessions and coming double time to the open campus, and then they have to pass their SOL test. And so then we could have the ten, twelve graduates. And that's it for our presentation. Any questions?
All right, Warren. You know this is a plug. Several school systems added ten, fifteen minutes to their school day in previous years. You just said that some folks like this idea. Just a thought.
Just a thought.
Just a thought. It's more time, it's free. And I don't think it's in any way an imposition on our wonderful teachers who already spend more time than, than they can imagine. But this, Dr. King, when you came, this open campus was something you had implemented previously, wasn't it? And it was amazingly successful. I don't think there's going to be a way to judge this success this year, next year, or even the year after. But at least what you've got is you've got indications of early success, and I can't see but any, any, I can't see in the horizon anything more than excellence. So thanks for bringing this to us.
All right. Very well. Thank you very much. All right, we'll take a short break, and let's be sure and try to be back in our places in the next ten or fifteen minutes to our begin. Thank you.